All right, it looks like we're ready to go. Welcome to the Monday, May 3, 2021 Salina City Commission Meeting. Before we get underway, I would like to confirm that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we will proceed with roll call.
Mayor Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. Before we get started today, I do want to make an announcement. I see that most of you, not all of you, do have your masks in place, and I want to thank you very much because regardless of your stance on mask, I do appreciate your being respectful of the ordinance that we have in place. If you are not wearing a mask, I want to let you know that you will not be recognized by the chair, and I would ask that you not participate in this room. We have several means that you can participate. If you do not want to wear a mask in this room, you can email the City Commission, you can call the City Manager's Office, you can write us a letter, or you can participate via Zoom. And I would urge you to take advantage of one of those other means of participation. With that, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. So if you're able, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will start off with awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the week of May 9 to May 15, 2021, as National Police Week in the city of Salina. Brad Nelson, Chief of Police, will read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Hodges and Commissioners. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in the week in which May 15 follows as National Police Week. And whereas law enforcement officers play an important role in safeguarding the rights, freedoms, safety, and security of the citizens of our community. And whereas the city of Salina desires to honor the valor, dedication, service, and sacrifice of its own peace officers, four of whom have been killed in the line of duty. And whereas 360 officers died in the line of duty in 2020, and sadly, 103 officers have been killed in the line of duty so far this year. Our community joins with the other cities and towns to honor all peace officers everywhere. Now therefore, I, Melissa Rose Hodges, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of May 9 to May 15, 2021, to be Police Week, and call upon all of our citizens in this community to especially honor and show our sincere appreciation for the police officers of this city by deed, remark, and attitude. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in the week in which May 15 follows as National Police Week. I call upon all of our citizens to make every effort to express their thanks to our officers who make it possible for us to leave our homes and families in safety each day, and to return to our homes knowing that they are protected by officers willing to sacrifice their lives, if necessary, to guard our loved ones, property, and government against all who violate the law. Sign this third day of May 2021 at the city of Salina, state of Kansas, in the witness thereof, the seal and the signature of the city are affixed. Melissa Rose Hodges, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Chief Nelson, and I really like that phrase, deed, remark, and attitude. Aside from those items, deeds, remarks, and attitudes, and following the laws of this good city, what else can we do? Is there anything going on to celebrate peace officers this week?
Well, as most know, we have an annual event at the Jerry Ivy Memorial Park. A lot of times when we say Jerry Ivy, we skip out the memorial, so I always like to stress that. But at the Jerry Ivy Memorial Park, we're not having it for the second year in a row because unfortunately of COVID. But we did make a, our Honor Guard made a two-minute, 50-some-second video just to honor those that have fallen before us. Hopefully it'll work, but we'll show it up here if that's okay.
Phenomenal, that's great. Thank you very much.
In moments of danger and desperation, the first people we turn to are law enforcement officers. They save lives, they stand in the gaps of peril, and they run into danger and violence. Every year since 1962, America has remembered the sacrifice that fallen officers have made on May 15, Peace Officers Memorial Day. The men and women in law enforcement continue to work hard every day to safeguard the communities they have sworn to protect. Often, they are unappreciated for the hard work and long hours they put in to ensure we are safe. This day is set aside to remember all the law enforcement officers who gave their lives protecting their communities. In 2020, 360 officers were killed in the line of duty, and sadly, 103 have been killed in the line of duty so far this year. It is important to remember that these police officers are fathers, mothers, brothers, sisters, sons, and daughters, and that they risked their lives and sacrificed precious time with loved ones so we can live in peace and security. Though they too often spend their days witnessing humanity at its worst, it is in their extraordinary examples that we see humanity at its best. On this day of remembrance, we honor fallen officers from the Salina Police Department, the Celine County Sheriff's Office, and the Kansas State Highway Patrol. Three different agencies that still one brotherhood. We in this brotherhood of blue, who often say we will never forget, must bring honor to those words and make them words of action. This week, the city of Salina honors the valor, service, and sacrifice of its peace officers and those of other agencies locally and nationwide. We proudly recognize the following officers who gave their lives for our community.
at Jerry Ivy Memorial Park, as we should all recall, is so meaningful. I mean, it's like a sacred service, and I appreciate you being able to bring it to us and adapt to COVID. That was lovely, so thank you. And I've got your signed proclamation here. Thank you very much. All right. Item 3.2.
Item 3.2, the week of May 2 through May 8, 2021, as Salina National Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Salina. Tiffany Benin, Sports and Events Manager for Visit Salina, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for letting me read today. Whereas National Travel and Tourism Week 2021 recognizes the power of travel and the industry's role in bringing back vibrant communities, including Salina, restoring the United States, Kansas, and local economy, rebuilding our workforce, and reconnecting America. Whereas with the significant impact of the COVID-19 pandemic, hotels, restaurants, events, attractions, and more were unable to welcome visitors. Our once-thriving travel and tourism industry was not the significant economic driver and employment generator that it had been. Whereas spending by domestic and international travelers for Kansas declined by 33% in 2020, resulting in tens of millions of dollars in lost revenues to the Salina and Celine County economy. Whereas this economic devastation led businesses to make significant changes in how they do business that were necessary to survival, shuttering in some cases, and in both scenarios ultimately put many Kansans and Salinans out of work. Whereas these devastating losses have proven how critical travel is to our community and to employment and revenue across these economies. Whereas through people growing in their want and security in activities to compete, convene, explore, and experience this community, state and nation, tourism will be an integral catalyst to economic recovery. So now therefore, I, Melissa Hodges, Mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2 through May 8, 2021, as Salina National Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Salina, and urge our citizens and all agencies and organizations to participate in supporting this industry of hotels, restaurants, entertainment, culture, transportation, and more in our community and beyond, and be a part of the restoration. In witness whereof, I have hereon too set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this second day of May 2021. Melissa Hodges, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Tiffany. Behind that 33%, sometimes we forget that there are a lot of people who have been suffering the last year as the hospitality industry has been hit so hard. So thank you for everything that Visit Salina has done to support that industry. Are we able to have anything going on this week to support the recovery that we all kind of see coming?
Absolutely, and we are seeing the recovery. And one of the things that kicked off this week for us, you saw this sculpture tour unveil downtown, or unwrap, and so we certainly encourage everyone to go see the sculpture tour. That's certainly a safe activity. We also had a gymnastics event. We have baseball and softball that happened this weekend. And of course, throughout the week, we'll be doing some social media posts, just recognizing our frontline workers, giving them a face, showing who they are and what they've done to go above and beyond for the tourism industry.
Well, thank you. That sounds great. Would you like to come forward? I've got your signed proclamation. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, that brings us to Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is an opportunity for anyone to speak on an item that's not on today's agenda. We would request that, as I said before, that you remain masked when you approach the podium, that you identify yourself, your full name, and where you're from, and limit your remarks to three minutes. And with that, I'll open up the floor and then turn it over to the citizens.
Norman Manos, Salina, Kansas. Here's a statement that George Washington made when they were forming the country. "A free people ought not only be armed and disciplined, but they should have sufficient arms and ammunition to maintain the status of independence from any who might attempt to abuse them," which includes their own government. Their own government. That covers a wide area. So our government has the power to abuse us. But I've got this statement right here from George Washington. So we need to make sure that our government is not abusing us.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak?
Denise Ward, Salina, Kansas. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Once again, I come before you to request for the mask ordinance to end. I realize that you have said that it will be revisited on May 24. However, I, unlike many of the other citizens of Salina, understand that this is only a revisit date, not an end date nor a guarantee of an end date, which is what brings me here and others before you every week. Vaccination demand has drastically reduced, leaving the 70% vaccination rate completely unattainable. Couple that with a clear disregard for the ordinance from a city commissioner, I and others do not understand the continued need. During the last commission meeting that the ordinance was discussed, one of the commissioners said there was a lot of "do as I say, not as I do" going on. It's really sad when that exact scenario is being played out by someone who is so adamant about leaving the ordinance in place. I would love to hear the commissioner's excuse for not wearing a mask during the Berkeley Sports Complex unveiling, and part of that excuse cannot be because the CDC updated their guidelines. The ordinance clearly states in Section 2, Requirements of Persons, letter E, "while outdoor in public spaces and unable to maintain a six-foot distance between individuals," not including individuals who reside together. For almost a year now, the citizens have heard we will follow the science, but as science has changed, our ordinance has not. Let's get this ordinance repealed, let our businesses resume, and let us get on with our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
The road that you guys milled down two years ago between where, I cannot, I talked with Jacob about it, I can't think what road it is. It's Magnolia before the, past Menards before Centennial. When do you guys expect to actually go in and do it right? Just milling it down has done nothing but create more problems.
And Mr. McDowell, you've talked to Mr. Wood about that?
Yeah.
So he's aware of the segment of the roadway that you're talking about?
Yes, I just didn't know what road. It's the road that goes from the new motel in Menards, south, or west, to Centennial.
Okay.
That whole road is, when it rains, it's like driving on glass because it's the oil.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll take a look at that.
Good afternoon. John Blanchard, live in Salina. Over the past several weeks, I've been watching the meetings at home, and I've noticed that there have been a lot of people that have been talking about the mask ordinance and coming up here and stating their opinions. It's hard sometimes because when you agree with them, they make it hard sometimes because they don't quite understand the job of commissioners. Commissioner Davis and Mayor Hodges, I appreciate that you explain why you want to extend the mask ordinance. Whether I agree with it or not, and frankly, I wish we'd get rid of this thing. I appreciate that. And I accept it as a governing body. The role of a commissioner, though, is not to just sit back and let the drama take over. It's to deliberate and make convincing arguments for your fellow commissioners to lift the mandate. And that's what we've lacked here. We've lacked really a second side to do this. And I'll say that I appreciate that three of you and former Commissioner France had voted in favor of this mask ordinance, and I think that was a responsible thing to do, and I thank the four of you for doing it. So I'm really speaking to you three. And I would just say, go back and look at your criteria, and if your criteria was 70% or until enough people that wanted it were able to get it, were fully vaccinated, which means two weeks after they've been vaccinated, that you would consider lifting that. I think that there is a chance that that may happen well in front of the 24th, and I hope that if that is the case, that you do hear some of the business owners and some of the people that have asked you to do that. I hope that you're able to look past some of the rhetoric and focus on just that. So if I were one of those with you, that's an argument that I might try to make with you. What I'm really up here for is talking about, we're easily distracted by masks, and I think a lot of, what's going to last much longer than a mask mandate is our rising taxes and fees. At your strategic planning meeting on Wednesday, in your packet, it showed that you're going to be talking about taking our street, neighborhood street budget from $3.7 million down to $2.7 million. And I'm deeply troubled by that because in 2016, when we passed, when three of us passed the sales tax increase, we promised citizens that that $3.7 million would be done to fix neighborhood streets. You're breaking our promise. So I ask that you keep your word, don't cut those street funds, and also, I told a friend of mine who mentioned that, please take care of the weeds this summer. We're already starting to see medians that are overly weeded, and we had a lot of people in town this weekend, and that person was extremely embarrassed about the condition of those things. And I'm just going to say one last thing and then be done. I'd like to express my appreciation to Salina Police Department, have many friends on that, on the force, and think about them and appreciate them on a daily basis. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor Chad Farber here in Salina. I've heard all of the data, and as Mr. Blanchard said, you've heard a lot of the rhetoric from me as well. We, as a group of citizens here in Salina, have heard the reasoning behind continuing this mask mandate. We have attempted to convey the desire of the majority of the citizens here in Salina. I even listened intently to Commissioner Davis rebut the repeal a few weeks ago, and I want to make just a few statements. I really do not understand the logic of thinking that you, as a board, can or will decide a course of action for every person, for every business, for every school district. It comes down to free choice. It comes down to freedom, and that's what we feel is being restricted. I was very surprised that the board sat back and allowed Commissioner Davis' statements from several weeks ago, that the public needs absolute direction, and quote, "We have seen what happens when we leave things up to people's wherewithal to make their own decisions." This board, I believe, should have censured him for saying that. That was very tyrannical, and I would go so far as to say communist, where the government will control what an individual does, says, or thinks. I am also outraged at the hypocrisy of mandating citizens to mask and then not following your own edict, as evidenced by pictures circulating around social media. I have them here as well. One of the commissioners out at the new facility, unmasked around others, and he was one of the staunchest, he was one of those that stood against the repeal of the mandate. And I think that is great hypocrisy. It goes back to the "do as I say and not as I do," and I think that is a shame for this board and for this commissioner as well. The FDA now classifies this mask as a medical device, so now this board is dictating a medical course of action against the will of the individual to be forced upon them, and that's setting a dangerous, dangerous precedent where a government body can impose a medical procedure upon the citizens of the city. And so I would ask you to immediately get this back on the agenda, immediately ask for a repeal, and I know you're discussing a new commissioner today as part of your agenda, but this needs to be done sooner rather than later. We are in the process of working on a petition so that we can bring that before the commission. City manager has told us that that paperwork is in the works, and we'd like to see that to us within this next week if we could. We understand we need 1,632 signatures to bring that petition before you, and from the response of the city and response of the citizens, that is very well within our reach. I would ask you, before we have to go through all of that to repeal this mask mandate, let us move on with our lives, let us continue recovering. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Farber. Is there anyone else who would like to speak today?
Good afternoon. I'm Carol Woody, Salina, Kansas. Basically, I'm just up here to give you statistics of what he just got through saying. "The mask mandates, we don't feel are helping." An independent study by the Kansas Policy Institute of publicly available data for the Kansas Department of Health and Environment found that at some point, 62 counties have had had mask mandates while 43 counties have never had a mask mandate. Of the counties that have had mask mandates, at one time or another, they have averaged between 5,341 positive COVID cases per 100,000 population to 5,439 positive cases per 100,000. Meanwhile, the counties that have never had a mask mandate have averaged 5,441 positive cases per 100,000. So statistically speaking, there's no difference in the number of positive cases based on whether or not a county has or has ever had a mask mandate, or a county that has never had a mask mandate. Just giving you statistics, basically saying the same thing that they're saying. We just think that it's time to go and try going without the masks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Woody.
Sandra Rolch, Salina, Kansas. I'm just going to add to what Carol was saying with regard to the mask mandate. Recent article indicated that many counties in Kansas are turning down shipments of COVID vaccine, to which they are entitled. I think the article cited Barton County a lot, but implied that Celine County was also involved in that, where our vaccination rate is about half of the goal of the 70% that was dictated by this organization. And the desire to get vaccinated, as you all probably know, is rapidly decreasing. Given that, you have to ask yourself a question. Is keeping the mask mandate in place encouraging people to get vaccinated? Is this a false sense of security? Why, I don't need to get vaccinated, I'm wearing a mask. Or is it causing people, as I mentioned, to be indifferent to getting vaccinated? If you think it will be a good idea for more people to get voluntarily vaccinated, then I would suggest you end the mask mandate now. One last thing, I also want to talk to Chief Nelson. The Granny Brigade on Saturdays have been at, help me, Carol, Ohio and Crawford with our "back the blue" flags, and we want you to know how much we appreciate all that you all do.
Thank you.
Mayor, Councilors, Commissioners, Carol Lee Jungle, Salina, Kansas. We hope that you are not considering mandating vaccinations like you have mandated wearing masks. Should you decide to do that to any group of people in Salina for any reason, I can assure you that actions would be opposed in the strongest ways possible. But here is a quick story. A Kansas woman who was six months pregnant lost her baby to miscarriage two days following her COVID-19 vaccine. This woman was told by her employer that she would lose her job if she did not get vaccinated. This is just one vaccine injury story of the many we are hearing every day, and I would like to cite the sources, the Kansans for Health Freedom. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak? And if there's anyone online who would like to, I see one hand raised online, if you would like to unmute them?
Okay, Mr. Corb, you should have access to unmute now.
All right, Mr. Corb, if you can hear us, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I want to start out by saying that...
I want to start out by saying that it appeared that you were talking to an entire room of people, Mayor Hodges. I know you were calling me out specifically. And that underscores the reason why this mask mandate needs to go. You are publicly, you're forcing me to publicly disclose a medical condition to everybody that's watching this, a room full of people. And I have just as much right to attend one of these meetings as anybody else and speak in person. And just because I'm medically exempt from wearing a mask doesn't mean I should be treated differently. Now, this mask mandate is going to end one way or another. We have a growing group of citizens who are working on a petition. We're working with lawmakers at the state level. And we don't need very many signatures, just over 1,600 signatures, and we can get a petition going. But if we're forced to do a petition, not only are we going to repeal the mask mandate, but we are going to strip the city's power to impose this kind of mandate in the future. And that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Corb. I would like to respond not only to Mr. Corb, but to other people who feel that they have medical exemptions. And just note that we have made, oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me now? Is that better? I'm sorry. I would just like to briefly respond to Mr. Corb and to others who feel that they cannot wear a mask in that we have made accommodations for input. We're not asking anyone to disclose their reasons for choosing not to wear a mask. I don't need to know about Mr. Corb's medical condition. I don't want to. But there are other ways that one can provide input at these meetings. So whether it's an email, whether it's a call to the city manager's office, whether it's a letter, we get letters every week here at the city commission. You can send it and carry the city manager's office. You may utilize Zoom, as Mr. Corb just did. But there are other ways that you can participate in the meeting. And I just want to emphasize that those options are available to you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, with that, we will move to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of April 26, 2021.
Would any commissioner like to remove the minutes of April 26, 2021 from the consent agenda? And if not, I would accept a motion to approve them.
Mayor Hodges, I move, we approve consent agenda, item 6.1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of April 26, 2021. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Item 7.1.
Item 7.1, street vacation, future land use and zoning items related to Celine County Jail project. 7.1A, second reading, ordinance number 21-11054, vacating the Platted Woodland Avenue right-of-way, east of North Front Street, except the west 200 feet. 7.1B, second reading, ordinance number 21-11060, amending the future land use map designation of the proposed Celine County Jail site to public, semi-public. 7.1C, second reading, ordinance number 21-11061, rezoning the proposed Celine County Jail site from I-3 to PDD, public use, public facilities.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Hodges, again, I will be recusing myself from this item due to a conflict.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Hoppick, don't go too far. All right. We have three action items under this item on the agenda. 7.1A, ordinance number 21-11054 was passed on first reading on February 22, 2021. Second reading was held in abeyance until the city commission had reviewed and approved a site development plan for the Celine County Jail project. A site development plan for the new county jail facility was approved by the city commission on April 26, 2021. Have we received any input from the public?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the commission for staff?
No.
Any public comments on this item? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move, we approve on second reading, ordinance number 2111054, vacating the Platted Woodland Avenue right-of-way, east of North Front Street, except the west 200 feet.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 21-11054 on second reading. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. And that motion passes 3-0. 7.1B, second reading, ordinance number 21-11060. Have we received any public comment since that time that you're aware of? Haven't gotten any on my end.
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Any public comment on this item? All right, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move, we approve on second reading, ordinance number 2111060, amending the future land use map designation of the proposed Celine County Jail site to public, semi-public.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve on second reading, ordinance number 21-11060. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes 3-0. And finally, the second reading on ordinance 21-11061. It was passed on April 26, 2021. Since that time, no comments have been received. Do we have any questions for staff? Any questions or comments from the public?
Governor Manville, Salina, Kansas. Try to make it in one question. When you researched the ownership of this property, did you go back to 1803?
I'm afraid that I can't speak for Mr. Manel.
No, I understand that, Mayor.
Yeah.
But whoever done the research, because there is a claim against this land. This land has never been paid for.
All right.
You don't have a clear title to it. You don't have a quitclaim deed or nothing. If you go back to 1803, the Louisiana Purchase, research that.
All right, thank you.
Because these people have got a claim against this land.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manel. Any other comment from the public?
As clarification, we don't do title work. There's a process for that outside the city's processes.
Gotcha. And we'll be sure to pass that along because I think maybe someone who's involved in the title process is actually sitting this one out right now. So we'll be sure to bring that to his attention. If there's no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move, we approve on second reading, ordinance number 2111061, rezoning the proposed Celine County Jail site from I-3 to PDD, public use, public facilities.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve on second reading, ordinance number 21-11061. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes 3-0. And we will recall Commissioner Hoppick to the dais, please. Now, you all heard me. I said, "Don't go far." All right, thank you. And we'll go on to 7.2.
Item 7.2, second reading, ordinance number 21-11062, changing the zoning district classification from I-1 to I-2 on the southern and western portions of the Tony's Pizza campus in order to create a uniform zoning district for the entire campus located at 3019 Scanlon Avenue.
Ordinance number 21-11062 was passed on first reading on April 26, 2021. Since that time, no comments have been received. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public? If not, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Hodges, I move, we approve on second reading, ordinance number 21-11062, changing the zoning district classification from I-1 to I-2 on the southern and western portions of the Tony's Pizza campus in order to create a uniform zoning district for the entire campus located at 3019 Scanlon Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve on second reading, ordinance number 21-11062. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes 4-0. Item 7.3.
Item 7.3, second reading, ordinance number 21-11057, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement between the city of Salina, Kansas, and the state of Kansas for the purpose of financing improvements to the wastewater treatment plant.
Ordinance number 21-11057 was passed on first reading on April 19, 2021. Since that time, no comments have been received. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move approval on second reading, ordinance number 21-11057, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement between the city of Salina, Kansas, and the state of Kansas for the purpose of financing improvements to the wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve on second reading, ordinance number 21-11057. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. And that motion passes 4-0. Item 7.4.
Item 7.4, discussion of process to be utilized to fill city commission vacancy resulting from the resignation of Commissioner Rod Franz.
Let me just begin by saying that it was with the deepest regret that we accepted the resignation of Commissioner Rod Franz. As many of you are aware, he had a fall a few weeks ago that's necessitated a long recovery period. And I would like to read, I thought it was in here in the packet, the letter of resignation that his family submitted because I thought it was so eloquent and it does speak to a lot of the things that we really valued about having, hearing from Rod. The letter reads, "We are writing on behalf of City Commissioner Rod Franz to submit his resignation from the Salina City Commission effective April 29, 2021. This move will allow Rod, his family, and his partner to concentrate on his recovery from injuries sustained in an April 6, 2021 fall. Rod's entire career and retirement years were devoted to public service and doing what is best for his community. We thank you, his fellow city commissioners, city staff, and advisory board members for their past and future professionalism and assistance in emulating his devotion and leadership." And it's signed by Rod's two sons, Chris Franz, Brian Franz, and his partner, Gail Martin. And I think I speak for all of us that we accept that resignation with the deepest regret. And I think that if you polled us individually, that we functioned very well with the addition of Rod. He truly made a difference in how this board functions. He brought a strong finance perspective, a long history with the organization as an employee and a director, and his analytical skills. I always looked forward to hearing his analysis of an issue that I thought was pretty straightforward. I didn't understand as well as I could have. And Rod's analysis was always extremely helpful. So I appreciate the staff report that Mr. Schrag put together. And I'm sure we've all had a chance to read it. Did you want to go over any of those parts with us before we kind of get into a process discussion here?
I think you have a lot of discretion, which I tried to convey in the report, both by statute and ordinance. It's just a decision by the majority of the remaining commissioners. I did try to provide you a little bit of history in three of the last vacancies that we've had, the process that we took, gave you some talking points to think about. But ultimately, what will be helpful for staff coming out of this conversation is if you could, by formal motion, provide direction on the date that you'd like to consider an appointment action, the application or nomination process that you'd like to have staff administer, the date of distribution of you in advance of that consideration so we can build that into the timeline. That then, if there is an application or nomination step that you prefer, there'd be a deadline for that as well. And then if you wish to communicate any qualifications, that would be good to articulate as well.
Thank you. I would like to note that in addition to what's included in the staff report, two of us who are on the commission right now sit here by virtue of an appointment being made, at least initially. Commissioner Davis was appointed initially and obviously has gone on to be reelected twice. I was appointed to take the, to replace Senator Randall Hardy, and then I ran for election. So I just wanted to point that out that unfortunately, we have some experience up here in terms of replacements. Regardless of whether or not we solicit applications like we've done with the past two replacements or opt to rely on nominations from within the commission, it's going to be essential that we have some consensus about what's important in selecting a replacement. And at a very minimum, an idea about what we, as a group, value in a commissioner. So to that end, I'm just going to throw out an idea. I went back and I reviewed former Mayor Seaton's notes. I reviewed the blue sheets, the attributes listed in the blue sheets. And I made a list of all of those attributes. And absent a suggestion from any of my fellow commissioners, which I'd love to hear, I was proposing that we could maybe go down the list and see if those are attributes that are still important to us as a governing body. And if they are, we could take a moment and score them. And what I would propose is that after we review the list of attributes, that we take a five or 10-minute recess in order for commissioners to give it a little bit of thought. Hopefully, we've all had some time to reflect on this for the last several days. And I know that every person up here does his homework. And so hopefully, we can, we can get this process underway. And if any, I'm open to ideas. I was just feeling a little bit, I wasn't quite sure where we needed to start.
Here I have two.
Oh, thank you. Sorry.
Just as clarification for anyone online or in the audience, this is the same list that was in the packet. It's just
It is.
in a format to facilitate conversation.
Exactly.
Do you want us to score these privately now?
Or do we, we want to just run through whether or not these, these were attributes that were established by a previous commission? If, some of them may not be as important to this governing body. So I was wondering if we could just go through each one. And if it's relevant, we keep it. If it's not, we can strike it. And if there are other suggestions, I left room for other attributes. If there's something that you would like to see on If there's something that you would like to see on this commission that's not represented in these, in this list of attributes.
If I could just
Sure.
Ask one question, I think I know the answer. But as we are discussing the importance of these, I'm assuming, at least for me, no one of these by themselves would be a deal breaker if not possessed by that candidate, but
Right.
would still be important in the total picture.
Right. And, you know, obviously, one of the great things about this commission and one of the frustrating things about this commission is we all, we have very different points of view. And I know it makes for lively discussions, but I was hoping it would help us all mutually understand as a group, what are the things that are most important to us that we're looking for? I mean, all of these things, in my opinion, are important and I could give them all. What I've done here is I, as Mr. Skregg mentioned, I put together the list that was in the packet and a scoring system from 1 to 5. And obviously, I could give all of these 5 there. But just in terms of trying to figure out what's the most important. This may be clumsy, it may be awkward, it may be too much work, so I'd appreciate hearing from you all.
Yeah, I've looked at this and looked at the blue sheet. You know, I believe these are all important. I don't believe that weighting them, to me, makes any difference. They're all, you know, could all be considered important. I believe that the person that we end up selecting, I'm guessing we'll all know fairly well, just for the fact that it needs to be somebody that's been involved in the community, has some type of experience, whether it's boards, commission, or whatever. So when we look at that person, we'll have, you know, we'll know what their strengths and weaknesses are. So, yeah, I mean, I think they're all, they all hold, you know, merit. And so I just think we need to go off of the different attributes we're looking for.
Okay. So are there any attributes that you would like to see that aren't represented in this list?
I would agree that all of those attributes are important. Previous commission experience and previous city board experience are important to me. But in fact, I, every person is different and reflect to different levels of all of those. If we were, if this were before the public being voted at election time, you know, you'd have that selected universe and you'd have to judge for yourself to what level any of those candidates had. So I think I'm going to need to see a list to consider before I can
Okay.
base it on a group of skills on a page.
Because some people have strengths and some have weaknesses. And you're going to have to weigh, you're going to have to weigh those to see what would
I'm looking for the best fit for our commission.
Sure. And I understand that. Just from, you know, I'm all about process, live and die by the process. But something that would at least be helpful for me as we take a look at candidates or applicants or however we choose to go about doing that, is at least to have some consensus on, you know, if all of these are important attributes and we can leave it at that, that's great. I just want to make sure that, you know, if this is our list of skills, experience that we're looking for, you know, that's just, I think, going to be helpful for us to keep in mind as we evaluate candidates. And fair disclosure, I think that the commission as a whole was on a couple of these emails, but we have had expressions, informal expressions of interest sent directly to the commission from former Commissioner Joe Hay, who is here today, former Commissioner Norm Jennings, and former Commissioner Kate Crawford. So, we obviously have some interest in this position. And I believe that when Commissioner Davis was first appointed, I think there were like four applications. And then when I was appointed, I think that it was considerably higher. I think it was like 14. So, you know, I don't know where in the spectrum we're going to be, but I don't think that we would be inundated with like 100.
Mayor, may I ask, on what, and maybe to Mr. Shragg as well, on what kind of a timeline do you think we are with this decision? I mean, there'd be some things that we need to be deciding in the next, you know, early June, and then others are more transient. So how much time do we want to take, I guess is my question?
I'd like to see this done pretty efficiently.
I was, just in the back of my mind, thinking that if we, depending on how we tabulate or how we look at those names, you know, if you took at least, it'd be a minimum of a week, maybe two weeks for expression of interest to come in. The question is then, how do we work through those expression of interests
Right.
as a group?
Right, right.
To come up with the best candidate for us.
Right.
But I would like to think that we would give two weeks, you know, no more than two weeks. I think any, I think a lot of individuals that would have an interest, they know that we're doing this now and I would think they would be able to I'm sorry, can you hear me now? Sorry. I would think that, you know, anyone that has an interest would be able to submit an expression of interest within the next two weeks.
So we are looking at going through the, I'm sorry, my microphone may not be that close to me either. But we are looking at doing the expression of interest route? I mean, is that acceptable to everyone?
Unless somebody has a different idea.
Okay. That's kind of what I assumed we'd be doing, but I didn't want to assume too much. I did print out a blank application from the Boards and Commissions application on the city's website. And all this is, is if you go to the city's website and you apply to be on a board or a commission, these are the questions that it asks you. I did not know if we wanted to add any questions specific for the city commission position. I mean, to me, this is
I guess I'm reluctant to want to change the form and confuse people with having to look for it if they're, I mean, there is ample space in here for them to give us whatever they feel we need to know about them, in my opinion. And if they miss the mark on that, maybe they're not really ready to be on the city commission.
Okay. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure with everybody that
And I've had, I've talked to, I have people that have difficulty finding this
It's incredibly difficult to find it.
The process is confusing to them. I wouldn't want to compound that.
Right. And I will say this, it did take me a minute to find it today. And I knew what I was looking for.
There's one place in there that asks if you serve on a current board, but then it asks, do you want to be reappointed? Obviously, that
Right.
that question would not
Not applicable.
Yeah. But hopefully they
And that would probably be something that would be helpful to have a disclaimer on, that if, or a checkbox, if you are selected as the city commissioner, you are willing to resign any city board or commission posts that you hold. Just so that there's no confusion on that.
So if we're considering this two weeks out, two Mondays from now, that makes the deadline really the Thursday before that Monday meeting, which really isn't two weeks, but
Yeah, it's going to get out my calendar.
Yeah, I'd ask Jacob if he could put a month calendar on the screen. And that, Commissioner Ryan, that's kind of where I was headed too, is if you want two weeks, a full two weeks for applications, or do you really mean a deadline of the 12th? That way we could distribute to you on the 13th or consider nation on the 17th?
And I'm not sure how, where Mayor Hodges is on this, but kind of like what we did on the last board we set up, it might be advantageous to get all the expressions of interest in and somehow massage those into a smaller number, depending on how many we have. Because I don't know how we do that, because it could get awkward, the four of us sitting up here talking about so-and-so. And, you know, we could have eight motions and still, and not have a candidate elected. So I'm not sure how we want to go about that.
I really, really, really want to avoid that.
And I do too, and that's why I'm bringing that up. I'm not sure, as mayor, if you've given thought as to how you would
I'm sorry, if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if I may jump in just as a little bit of background, we have a policy in place for board appointments where the presumption is it's ratification of the mayor's nomination in essence. So you receive kind of the list of EOIs and then you don't communicate amongst yourselves as a governing body. You communicate to the mayor your individual feedback. The mayor then puts together a slate of nominees for the governing body's ratification. I just want to make sure that this is a little bit different.
Yeah.
As uncomfortable as it may be, any massaging that happens needs to happen in the
In the open meeting, I understand that. That's why I'm saying the least massaging we can do, the better off we'll probably be, but
I think that it would be really nice if we allowed ourselves a bit of time to see how many applications come in, because if we get, if we get four, if we get six, then absolutely, I think that that same process would work in terms of, you know, ranked choice. And at least it could get us started on here. Because I think what we saw with the citizens review board is there were, I mean, really, we agreed more than we disagreed. I mean, there was a huge consensus on that. So, but I think we also need to be prepared, if there's 20 applications, then it might need to be something that's done in two rounds where we get it down to a manageable number, whether that looks like four or six or something like that, so that we can dive a little bit deeper into what exactly we're looking for. Does that, deadline on the 12th?
So what I've heard, I think I've heard consensus about you want to use EOIs.
Yes.
I have one other question. Because of the open meetings, if we receive 12 expressions of interest, those will be made public, correct?
Yes, they would be a public record.
Okay.
So to Mayor Hodges' point, you certainly could take it in, you could decide the next step once you've got the applications in. So when I say the 17th, that doesn't necessarily mean you have to make the selection on the 17th. You could have EOIs in hand and you could, you could keep your options open. You could go ahead and make the appointment, or you could say that you need another step in the process. So I guess my first question for you would be, are you comfortable that that's enough turnaround time for expression of interest to be due basically a week and a half from now?
In my opinion, yes. For those that'll be interested in this, I think they'll come forward quickly.
So that
I agree.
And I'm worried about compromising, you know, our inability to make decisions down, you know, down the road. So I'd like to get to it.
Okay, so that makes a May 12th submission deadline.
Submission deadline.
And then the premise is that we would go ahead and distribute to you in the packet the following day the EOIs that were received.
Correct. And then I think depending on the number of expression of interests and if we want to establish that number now, I mean, if we have more than, you know, say, six, we, you know, like if we have 10 or 12, we might want to do it in a couple of rounds, or?
I say we wait and see what we have.
Okay.
Let's see what we have, and then we'll make that determination when we see whether we have four or 14.
Right.
Yeah.
So then I would anticipate that depending on that, action on the 17th or the 24th?
Yeah, so what I'm taking away from that is there will be an agenda item on the 17th and you'll kind of decide your course from there.
Yes. I mean, it may be as simple as just an update on how many we've received and what the next step in the process is. But hopefully, not hopefully, I would anticipate making a decision at that May 24th meeting at the very latest. I mean, if we can accommodate it on the 17th, then it would be the 14th. So we could get into, hit the 1st of June and have someone sworn in and serving. Is that acceptable?
It's a goal.
It's a goal.
Yeah, it's a goal.
I'd like to think we could do it on the 17th.
Now, this would be different from other citizens' boards in that Mayor Hodges has been dutiful in certain situations in discussing with other candidates time of, you know, availability, expectation. That would not, would that be appropriate in this case, or it would not be?
The process that you described is by our own adoption, by resolution for boards and committees, but it does not specifically address vacancies on the city commission.
And to Commissioner Davis's point, when we were looking to fill the citizens' review board, I did reach out to every single candidate that received, you know, more than like two votes. I reached out to all of them to let them know that they were under consideration and to visit with them a little bit further about time commitment, what would be expected, access to social media, and to make sure that we were getting as objective a group as possible. And I felt really good about that, that process, which, you know, I think that replacing a commissioner is equally as important a process. So I won't rule that out, that I may contact each candidate and visit with them as well. So, unless the governing body would direct me not to, unless that's a, unless that's a sticking point, then of course, we can discuss that, but
If we have a list, in fact, we could contact each one of them and
Absolutely.
I was thinking the same thing. Nothing would preclude any of the rest of you from making
Ultimately, this will come down to a motion for one individual, not a, not fill in a whole board. One individual and
And then that's probably the question I really wanted to get answered. Otherwise, we would have to ask whatever
Yeah.
little questions we had in an open session, have the person come up to the podium. It can be kind of awkward.
Right.
I'm looking to the city attorney that, it's, you know, as you have individual conversations with prospective candidates, it starts to feel like ex parte communication, but this isn't necessarily subject to ex parte communication limitations, is it?
That's correct. I think the guiding principle, and maybe this is obvious to everyone, is that the thing from an open meeting standpoint that we have to be watchful for is simply that you not be communicating among yourselves. The described unilateral communication to the mayor as kind of the focal point of progressing is certainly appropriate if that's the wish of the group. But it's, anytime you all are discussing the matter among yourselves, it needs to be here and in public. And that's a matter of both the Open Meetings Act and Attorney General interpretations.
Okay, so to recap, application deadline on May 12th. The applications will be in our packet for Monday, May 17th.
They'll be in the May 13th packet, or the May 17th.
Yeah, for the 17th meeting. Commissioners are welcome to contact individual candidates if they've got questions or concerns or want to do any further getting acquainted with specific applicants. And then we will come together on the 17th and hopefully have a nomination. I think the way that we've handled it in the past is that there's been a nomination, a second, and then we voted on it. So that's the, that's what I would anticipate, unless, and here's the caveat, that we get just an enormous amount of applicants, in which case the 17th may be, we may need to go a different route.
And with the goal being taking it back up on the 24th in that instance?
Yeah. Yeah. To see if we wanted to narrow it down at all. And if not, then we will just go into it on the 17th, and we'll consider all comers.
So not to make this too formal, but in trying to piece together the history of all these other ones, we didn't have a very good record of what you just came together with for consensus, so if someone would be willing to make that as a motion, we can get it on record, and it'll help the paper trail. And even if it's, I so moved what the mayor just said. We can reduce what you said to writing in a way of a motion.
I'm going to look at the city clerk, see if she wants to go through my whole stream of consciousness later and reduce that to a motion.
And I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I would move we adopt the plan for addressing and discussing candidates for the city commission as described by the mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the process that we've described in our previous discussion. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye, that motion passes 4-0.
Mayor, if I might, I think the family is tuned in today. And I just wanted to say that 31 years of my career, I've dealt with elected officials directly or indirectly as the deputy. I can't think of any, I think Rod is unsurpassed in his time, energy, and commitment. He put a ton of work into it. I'm not going to say that there aren't other elected officials, yourself included, that have meritoriously served, but Rod's right up there with them.
And thank you for making that acknowledgement. I wrote to Rod's family and let them know that when I started at Salina Downtown, the whole process of complying with the statutes for the financial reporting and things like that for the business improvement district fees, and one of the first things I did was throw myself on Rod's mercy. And he was very kind and explained it very thoroughly in language that I could understand, so that I understood what I needed to do, what our deadlines were, and I've never forgotten that kindness that he showed and continued to show when he was helping to explain things on the commission as well, so very honored to have served with him.
I know Rod's greatly missed. One thing I've came to appreciate with Rod is even if we didn't vote the same way, we always walked out of this room as gentlemen and respected the other. I probably started becoming less detailed on the numbers when Rod got involved, because I knew he had massaged him, and I know he'll be sorely missed when we look at item 8.2, because we all bring our strengths and weaknesses to a board, and obviously Rod's strength was the financial aspect of it. And I hope if his family's listening, we wish him the best. He is dearly missed, and we look forward to seeing him in this room again someday and be able to tell him thank you ourselves, so.
Well said. I'm sorry. All right. With that, I guess we will move on to item 8.1.
Item 8.1, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement with Missouri Network Alliance LLC, DBA Bluebird Network, to allow the installation of fiber optic and related facilities within the public rights-of-way in the city of Salina.
Good afternoon, Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Bluebird Network is a fiber optic installer, and their client in Salina is U.S. Cellular, and they're seeking authorization to install about 64,000 lineal feet of fiber optic cable to support U.S. Cellular's network expansion in the city. And so what's before you today is a right-of-way users' agreement. That's our fairly standard agreement that allows Bluebird the non-exclusive right to install cable in the right-of-way subject to the city's regulation. And the agreement before you sets out all the usual rights and responsibilities for Bluebird. In terms of fees, they're not subject to any franchising fees, but they would be subject to the standard excavation permit, right-of-way permit fees for each one of their installations. So your options this afternoon, as it relates to Bluebird's request, are to authorize the city manager to sign a license agreement with Bluebird Network, authorizing them to install private fiber optic cable in the right-of-way. You could postpone consideration of this item to allow staff or Bluebird to provide additional information, or you could choose not to authorize the city manager to sign the attached agreement and provide further direction to staff. I do see Mr. Jeff Sorrels is connected via Zoom. He's representative from Bluebird Network. If any Commissioners had any questions of Mr. Sorrels.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Are there any questions for staff or for Mr. Sorrels of Bluebird Network?
I take it, Mr. Andrew, this is pretty standard. We have the insurance requirement, the repair of damage to right-of-way. I mean, it's, I mean, I guess from a city standpoint, we're protected from any damages that we would have to.
Right, it's the standard set of rights and responsibilities set out. They're, they can work in the right-of-way, but their rights are subordinate to the city's rights and to other franchise utilities. They'll be expected to do proper locates of other utilities and avoid conflicts. And they're responsible for any damage that would be done to our rights-of-way.
And by way of federal regulation and deregulation of our authority, we don't have a lot of discretion to consider whether we want them in the right-of-way or not. They have a right to be there, we just have to administer it correctly.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Andrew.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the public? And if not, I will bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Hodges, I move we authorize the city manager to sign a license agreement with Bluebird Network, authorizing Bluebird Network to install a private fiber optic cable network in the public right-of-way.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to execute a license agreement with Missouri Network Alliance LLC, DBA Bluebird Network. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye, that motion passes 4-0. Which brings us to 8.2.
Item 8.2, resolution numbers 21-7954 and 21-7955, making certain findings and determinations as to the need for housing within the city of Salina, Kansas, and setting forth the legal description of real property proposed to be designated as a rural housing incentive district within the city.
Ms. Roscoe, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before we launch into this, it is housing-related under other business. If you might consider moving the presentation that Marty Schukert, our housing consultant, was preparing to do on 5/10 to 5/17, I did talk to him today about that, and he'd like the feedback that you're giving at the strategic planning on Wednesday to be part of his policy recommendations that he's bringing forward. And with timing, he'd need a little bit more time, so I just want to put that out there for you to consider under other business.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't think that should be an issue. Thank you, Lauren.
Moving into resolution 21-7954 and resolution 21-7955, these are both regarding the creation of an RHID district pertaining to two projects being brought for you. I want to summarize just a little for those who are listening at home. The city in 2015, 2016 adopted a housing plan. Since then, we've experienced a significant amount of new jobs or have been notified of new jobs that are coming related to economic development business that is occurring, whether they're expansion or new businesses coming to our community. That has resulted in a need for housing. As part of this discussion, we have brought back RDG, who helped us to do that plan in 2015, 2016, and they've been working with us since January. Throughout that discussion, we've been updating our demographics. We have been looking at new projections and also having discussions around incentives for housing projects. One of the reasons that has become part of our discussion is that there's a national crisis related to housing. There's not one community in the country right now that does not need housing of different forms, and developers are very aware of that, looking to do their projects where the materials are available, the labor force is available, and the risk is lowest. That puts many communities in a position of needing to look at incentives where they might not have before. And some of the original or kind of the common supply and demand concepts related to housing are still being affected by the need for incentives because of this nationwide demand. Of the two requests you have in front of you tonight, both are asking for RHID, and that's why the two resolutions are in there. Those are the first step in the RHID process. There is one of the applications that is also requesting additional incentives. That includes the city applying on their behalf for MIA for moderate income housing, and then also the waiving of city building permit fees as part of that project. I'm going to take these in order and work through that. I'm also going to kind of go through some of the RHID or rural housing incentive district components, just so that we're all on the same page. In the city, we've used IRBs for many development projects. We actually haven't done an RHID before. We've looked at them, but we haven't done one before. They are a state, they are in state statute. Many communities have used them, but we have not. They're actually kind of similar to a TIF. Some people kind of say they're TIF for residential housing, so if you're familiar with TIF, it has a lot of similarities. But there are some, but there are very distinct differences from IRB or industrial revenue bonds, and that's one of the things I wanted to talk about before we launch into each of these. RHID is only applicable in certain sized communities. We are one of those, we are actually the largest community that is probably applicable for this. So the community cannot be larger than 60,000, and the county cannot be larger than 80,000. Different than IRB is we have to form a district. The district could be as large or small as you want, and you're not limited to the number of districts that you apply for over time. The program is designed to help aid developers build housing within communities and assist with public improvements. Typically, we see land infrastructure or land acquisition, infrastructure. In this case, it could apply even to private infrastructure such as electric, gas, those types of things. Some grading and earthwork are the most common things done in RHID. One of the things I didn't, I think, make clear enough in the blue sheet, and one of the things I want to talk about right now, is that this actually isn't a full abatement. It's actually capturing the taxes. So you have an increment increase between the real property tax and what is developed in that new value. That's captured to then pay back what the RHID was or is collected for. There is a maximum term of 25 years for an RHID, but you, the body, can negotiate that to a different length, and a developer can ask for a different length. It doesn't have to be the full 25. Also, the amount that's captured is typically 100%, but either can be asked for or negotiated to a different level. So those are the two things to be aware of when looking at an RHID request. There is a setup process, and it's a bit more work than something like an IRB, where we make motion decision and we move forward. There is a very distinct protest period, I should say. We start now with this RHID resolution that basically forms the district and recognizes that we have a shortage in housing, and we send that to Department of Commerce. If Commerce agrees with that, they verify it, and that essentially says your district works. You can now go forward and do a development agreement for the activities that would happen within the district. That development agreement, when complete, comes back in front of you. There's also a development plan that's part of the RHID system, but a lot of it boils down to the development agreement. That, all forms comes to you, there's a notification period that a public hearing date must be set 30 to 70 days prior to, I'm sorry, a notice must be set prior to that public hearing. And then two weeks prior to that date, we also must make sure that's advertised in the paper, the school district and the county are specifically notified of this. And then the public hearing is held, and then following that, there's a 30-day protest period. So those are some very distinct features of RHID. As I mentioned, one of the projects, resolution 21-7955, describes, commonly known as the Ryan Edition, is also seeking MIA for moderate income housing. It's a program run by KHRC. It taps into a state housing trust fund of annually $2 million, and we are a city that does qualify that for that. It has to be a population of 60,000 or less. The maximum ask in that program is 400,000. RFPs for that from KHRC typically open in July. Responses to those must be in by September, and awards are in November and December. We, as the city, would apply on that developer's behalf. And additionally, the Ryan Edition has also requested a waiving of all building permit fees. In that particular project, that's estimated at a little over $97,000. Getting specifically into each project, now that we've discussed the different incentives that are being asked, resolution 21-7954 is for Magnolia Point. This is located on 10.68 acre lot, recognized by Menards and the Fairfield Inn and Suites. It is within city limits, it is unplatted, ground is zoned C5. There's no water and sewer currently installed, and there are no perimeter road fees or special assessments applying to that property at this time. 168 units of multifamily are being proposed in six buildings on the property. The developer is looking at a 24-month construction period with 84 units produced every 12 months. Start of construction would be fall of 2021. This is being proposed by Perry Reed Construction. They are also the company that's the project manager for Chapel Ridge Apartments and the Reserve at Prairie Glen Apartments. Their estimated ROI or return on investment is 5% to 10%. They are asking for an RHID of 10 years at 100%. Following staff report, Alex Perry and Dennis Lawver of this project are available for questions from the commission. Resolution 21-7955 is regarding the Ryan Edition. That is a 25-acre parcel at the corner of South Ohio on the east side and East Schilling Road on the south side. This is within city limits, it is platted, it's zoned R1, R2, and PC5. No water and sewer are installed, and it is unlikely to have perimeter road fees and no special assessments at this time. They are proposing 108 units of owner-occupied housing, that's 42 units of single-family residential, and 66 units of townhomes. They have a 36-month construction period with all infrastructure being done in phase one, and they plan on starting fall 2021. This development is being proposed by South View Estates LLC, a group composed of local builders and developers. Their estimated ROI or return on investment is 12% if they get the, all the incentives they have asked for, which includes 25 years at 100% for RHID, plus the MIAH max ask of 400,000 and the building permit fee waiver. Ross Vogel and other representatives of South View Estates LLC are available for questions. If we look at the live Salina plan and the numbers proposed to us by our consultant recently updated, he looked at setting two sets of goals, basically now to 2025 and 2025 to 2030. And if we look at now, as these projects would pertain really with quick construction time over just the next couple of years, the number of owner-occupied units recognized in the live Salina plan update was 432 units. And 432 units of rental units, so same number, but different product type, owner-occupied and rental. If you go forward with these two incentives that are being requested for, our owner-occupied units needed would drop from 432 to 324, and our rental units would drop from 432 to 264. As I've mentioned, this is very similar to a TIF, so when you look at the blue sheet with the breakdown of the fiscal note, you'll see that Magnolia Point at the 10 years, 100%, using a total appraised value of almost $14 million, and looking at that 10-year time, has the captured amount at a little, or almost $2 million. And then Ryan Edition, for its 25 years, at 100%, is a total captured tax of just over $6 million. for its 25 years at 100%, is a total captured tax of just over $6 million. Staff is available for questions along with project representatives. The commissioned actions or recommended actions are the same but for two different projects. That includes, one, approval of Resolution 217954 or the other resolution, or you could approve the resolution with amendments and/or further direction regarding development agreement provisions, additional steps to be taken, et cetera, as the city commission deems appropriate, or three, postpone consideration of these resolutions to a specified date and time and provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments to the city commission would like to request for further consideration, or four, deny a resolution, which would result in staff not submitting a resolution to the State of Kansas Department of Commerce or the creation of an RHID district.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Driscoll?
I have some. And it did occur to me just now. On that summary on the blue sheets, it's page seven. When you're looking at the total tax over the 10 years for the Ryan Edition, should that still be total tax over 10 years, or should it be total tax over 25 years, or were you just doing 10 years to compare the two?
Well, actually, the Ryan Edition, you can see total tax over 10 years is blank, I think, because I made a mistake when I was cutting, but the Excel spreadsheet prepared for us does have them at 25 years.
Okay. So just erase that line?
Pardon?
No.
Yes.
So in this case, the total appraised value would be just -- does that include the completed structures, or is that just the infrastructure and land acquisition costs?
No, it's infrastructure, the structures. It's the whole thing when the project is complete.
So what is the total appraised value then on the Ryan Edition?
I am bringing that up right now.
Okay. It says total project costed $20,535 is what is on that back page. Is that the total?
It's the 84, isn't it?
And did you have the tax amount with that?
So the taxed amount, are you asking for?
Well, for the Ryan Edition, I'm assuming that tax amount would be the total tax amount I mean, there's a total of 6.07 million after you take out the USD and the state. So is that the -- so I'm guessing maybe that's 6 million plus whatever that other percentage is.
So that total is, without taking out the state and USD of 305, is $7,177,506.
All right. And if it's maybe on that same page you're on, what's the value of a waiver of building permit fees for the Ryan Edition?
It is.
$96,000 or something, wasn't it?
It is. And I will say, that is based on what we know of the project. I mean, valuations can change based on materials and things like that, but it was 90.
I don't know why I thought it was 90.
So it's in the neighborhood of $100,000, though?
Yeah.
And I don't need the exact number, but just.
Yeah, it's like $97,000.
Okay.
Yeah, 97,386.
All right. Just a few other general questions. For the RHIDs, then, we could actually have several in town at the same time.
Yeah, I mean, some communities have several of them. Some communities take and designate a whole area with them. You can do it project by project or area by area.
So for properties in what we would, in our conversations, probably called the infill area, can it be restricted to a block or two or a lot, or does it need to be bigger than that?
It can. Typically, the way we've seen this applied in the state thus far is typically in rural communities, more in greenfield, new development. I don't think it could not be used for infill. I'd have to think a little bit more about kind of how that would work. There are probably other programs, if what we're trying to do is kind of bridge the gap in infill development, that might work easier, because a lot of times, this is all about infrastructure. And in infill, we already have the infrastructure. That's not where the cost issue is at. So that's why you don't usually see it for infill.
Okay. Bear with me here. And for the moderate income housing, is that -- you mentioned grant or loan to the city?
Yeah, I mean, the state, it can be done a couple of different ways, but typically, if the city is applying on behalf of a developer, it's a granted amount.
Because if it turns into a loan, then the city is paying that out of its general fund or tax fund or company?
I would assume so. I.
So that would be basically a cash infusion into that project?
Yeah. If it's done like a grant, which is the most common, at the full amount, it is cash granted to that project.
Right.
That basically helps to bridge that construction gap. And MIA is kind of interesting because it doesn't have, like in a lot of housing programs, you know, you can't have the mortgage or the rent be more than X, right? It can't be more than a certain amount. MIA doesn't restrict you like that. The whole goal is just to get housing out there. That's one of the reasons they use the word moderate.
Okay. And comparing the cost with the expenses for the two projects, the Ryan Edition, listen, I don't know whether it's just the way that these were reported, brokerage and sales, and I don't see that listed for the Magnolia.
Because one's a rental and the other is.
It's all rental?
Yes. 168 units of multifamily.
Okay, so none of those would be.
Nope. So there are six large apartment complexes.
Okay. And one last question. It's kind of a theoretical question, but we have not had our final housing discussion with Mr. Schuchert, and in fact, the request that you passed on on his behalf actually underscores my point even better than I could have made it. If we take action on these now, we are basically establishing a policy by precedent.
I.
And we are like.
I'm a little city man. I wouldn't agree with that.
This close to setting up our policy, and it just kind of seems, particularly if the person who's guiding us in setting up that policy wants to wait until we've done our strategic planning session in two days to incorporate that into his recommendations for our policy, it would seem like this decision ought to wait until we have a policy.
Well, to segue into Mike, what I would say is, you, as a body, asked us to bring incentives prior to a policy being adopted. So that is why it's before you right now.
No, I appreciate learning about it, because it's nice to see what people want to do and what help they need, and that might influence, you know, if we know what the game around town is or around the nation is, then we probably need to tailor our policy to play the game.
And I think Marty will tell you that he can give you advice. He's given you a lot of information, but at the end of the day, it's our policy as a community. So how you decide that, how you guide that based on his recommendations is going to be.
Right, but we're paying him money to help us make that decision. I mean, it's like going to see a council. They don't tell you what to do. They help you talk about your life, and so you can decide what to do.
I have a couple of questions or maybe a couple of comments that'll help us on this. Today, basically, we're just approving the area by legal description to be an RHID.
That is correct.
We are not setting, and I guess maybe Commissioner Davis, Dr. Davis, I can't, that we are not entering into a development agreement that locks us into a 10- or a 25-year payback, correct?
Correct. That would happen when you have your public hearing, the development agreement, and all those pieces.
So today, what we're really doing is saying, this piece of ground, we're going to go ahead and go to the state and ask for it to be part of a RHID.
Okay, and that's a nice analogy. It's a nice explanation. How much momentum are we giving this thing by declaring the area? Is that a veiled promise, or is it a subtle promise? Hey, we're going to go through this for you because we took the first step? Does it mean we have incentives?
I think it says we're willing to look at it and work with them. I mean, I'd like to go through a couple of my other comments, because then I think we get into each, I think we need to look at each project separately to see how that's working. The other thing is, we really aren't the only ones approving this, correct? We're going to have to go to USD 305, the county airport, and they're going to have to approve it also at their board level.
As my understanding, they don't need to actually approve it at the board level, but they have the ability to protest ours.
Okay.
County and school district.
County and school district, right. So they can appeal that, okay?
Correct. There's a 30-day protest period following your final action, which is held at that public hearing, and they also are notified prior to that public hearing so they could speak at the public hearing. They could send written comment. So you would be hearing from them sooner than later.
And as I said in our strategic planning, this is kind of a weird timing right now because we have some American recovery dollars and potentially some infrastructure dollars coming from the federal government. If we get into this program, even if we enter into a development agreement, can we make that development agreement such that dollars from those could flow back into this to shorten the timeframe of the tax abatement?
Yeah, I think if you address it as part of the development agreement, it'd be an opportunity.
Okay.
There are ways. And the development.
I think that would be something that we would want to be able to do, because those dollars that maybe are coming with the American Recovery Act or the Infrastructure Act, if it gets passed, this may be a perfect place to flow some of those dollars and shorten the timeframe for the tax abatement.
At this time, I believe that would be possible through the development agreement.
Okay.
That's why we have legal.
That's money that could be used for other projects.
Also, yeah.
To, for which there would be no future tax. We'll eventually get property tax off of these.
Yeah. The thing we, you know, and again, you know, for years, we've talked about economic development and how we, you know, we wanted it in Salina. And now, we kind of have the trifecta going on, as we discussed earlier, that we have the lowest inventory of homes that we've had since I've been in the business since 1980. We have upcoming, the highest demand we're ever going to have. And when I say housing, that's both purchase and rental properties. And we also have all-time high construction costs. So as much as we want economic development, and we're getting it, and we've seen the numbers that are coming, we're kind of between a rock and a hard spot, and we're probably, as I said one time, we're going to be asked to make some decisions that we may not like, but I don't know if we have a lot of choice. Now, we have choices of terms and some things, but personally, I think there's going to have to be some type of incentives to get some of this done. I think Marty, when he talked to us on one of his Zoom calls when we did, didn't he talk about without incentives that rent rates were going to be 1,600 a unit or something?
Well, the example that he had.
Yeah, that he gave.
His indication did have those numbers, for sure.
And by doing some of these incentives, we got that down closer to what would be market for the type of job individuals we're bringing into the community.
And the other thing is, is it lowers risk, which is usually one of the key decision factors in a developer choosing a community.
Yeah. A couple of the things we get to looking at as we do this are, one, what type of return on investment do we think the investors do, which they are doing a return on investment. They are taking some risk. And then, what was the other thing I was going to say? I just went blank. I hate getting old. Return on investment, and I'll think of it here in a minute.
It's okay. As much as I like leaving a number out of a blue sheet, so.
Any other questions for staff?
No questions.
No Commission, Mark? Okay. All right, my turn. I have a whole bunch of questions. I'm trying to figure out what's the logical order here. How much are we paying Marty Schuchert for his follow-up engagement?
Under $20,000.
I figured it was under $20,000. I didn't know, because obviously it didn't come to us for consideration, but I didn't know how much we're paying him. And I don't mean that necessarily as a facetious question, and I understand that we also gave staff guidance that if they had a project, that if you have a project, bring it to us. The timing is so, at least for me, the timing is so close here. When I was struggling to answer some of those questions that Marty had us answer, I kept thinking over and over, this is a kind of a question that I would like to have Marty guide us through. You know, and this is a question I would, and I have some out-there ideas that I included in that, just to, you know, to get his feedback on, but I am not sure, even though we have devoted, what, four study sessions and probably at least six hours to this, I feel like, you know, we're kind of building, and we're building, and each one builds on the next, and we're just getting to the point where we're going to be talking about policy questions and how to implement. So I'm struggling with this a little bit, and the other thing is, it's incredibly unfortunate that I'm relying on information from Hays and Emporia and Garden City, that these communities have developed their RHID policies, and I'm assuming other policies, so they have a framework for making their decisions so that they can make consistent decisions. When we come out of the whole Marty Schukert convo, are we going to have policies similar to what we received from Hays and Emporia and Garden City?
Yeah, so Marty will present. He's not going to have that to hand out that night. He's going to essentially have that framework, and we're going to say yes, no, and then he'll start developing each of those individual pieces that will build into a housing incentive policy.
What's our timeline on building the housing incentive policy?
I think we've identified as staff, RHID would be the first off the bat, just because we've, it's had the most traction. And it's the one that's most repeatable, if you look at good examples. But other things that are maybe less, or we don't have to necessarily write the policy, like MIA, for instance, you know, it may just be a short policy that says, we're willing to support MIA if it falls into this category and this category. Otherwise, you know, X, Y, and Z, we'd have to do something different. If we want to reach out to banks and form a consortium, or, you know, we want to work with employers, those are all things that we can specify. Those will take more time because they're not in state statute. We don't have kind of a basic recipe, and then we build in specifics. We would kind of have to start from ground zero. So some will take longer than others, I guess is my short answer.
Right, and I get that. But in terms of like, if another community were to reach out to us and say, hey, can you send me an electronic copy of your housing incentive policies, when do we think we might have that ready to present? Because frankly, I'm incredibly impressed with Hays and Emporia and Garden City, and I found myself using their rationales to try to evaluate. And I found myself using their rationales to try to evaluate these projects. When, when will be, when will we be at those, that same point developmentally as those other communities, do you think?
Be my hope by the end of the summer, but some of that just depends on the decisions we make in the next couple of weeks and how much work it takes to, to make those things happen.
Right, yeah, I was going to add, if it, if the guidance we get replicates what you're seeing, it's going to be much easier. If we're getting creative and heading off in another direction, then I'll just make it that much more original and take a little bit more time to craft.
Okay. I'll address that later. In terms of these specific projects, are, is this land valued at an ag valuation presently?
I would assume that would be the case for both of them, based on state statute about the application of.
The Ryan addition is, but the Magnolia Point is not?
Correct.
Okay. So we would be basically be committing to keeping that ag valuation in place for the next 25 years? I mean, we, we would be accepting the, the proceeds from, I'm not saying, I'm not saying this right.
The base tax would be based on an ag assessment, which is very small. So the base on those is very small, so the increment is much higher. Whereas the Magnolia has some tax based on it. So that, we'll, we'll be getting taxed on that from the base value because we're only going to pay the developer the increment value, if that makes sense. So they're currently, in the Ryan addition, currently there are ag assessed, which very little tax.
Right.
They would switch to residential when they're developed, and then that tax is what goes back to the developer.
Right, and I think my question is, and I'm not expressing it very well, very clearly, but since it's presently valued at ag, that's, that's the base. That, that's the base. That's the amount that we would continue to collect and to capture for the next 25 years?
If they're still based at, if they're still valued at ag when we set this policy and when that, I believe the base year is when we actually sign the development agreement. We make the plan, just like a TIF.
Okay.
Then whatever it is in that year, which is, I don't know why it wouldn't be ag at that point.
Okay.
So something to add, though, in RHID, because it's about capturing, if the value is going up quicker than expected, the RHID will pay off faster.
Right, and the.
So if you set it for 25, sometimes, I mean, it can pay off faster than that amount of time.
And I guess I'm not quite understanding since, I, I understand how it's set up for the apartments in terms of, you know, the money flowing back on there. In terms of the Ryan addition project, since these are going to be properties that are purchased and held, how, can you walk me through how the, the, the money, does that increment continue to flow back to the developer? It doesn't go to the individual homeowner to offset any of their specials or anything like that?
Yeah, the developer would take out a loan for the project.
Right.
And, well, I guess one thing that's worth noting is, we're approaching this from a pay-as-you-go approach. There, there is a format where we could incur the debt on the front end, and then that increment, we could capture it and apply it to the debt that we incurred. But both of these are a pay-as-you-go approach whereby they're incurring the debt privately. And then that increment generation, whatever it turns out to be, up to an agreed-upon amount, is paid to them as it's realized for them then to offset that debt. So in either instance, the apartments, they'd, they'd have a loan for the apartment buildings. On the Ryan addition, they'd be taking out a loan for the infrastructure and, and the development that, and the costs that they incur to develop that, that subdivision. And then the increment would go to them to pay off that debt. As I look at the current appraised value for the Magnolia Development Partners land, which the Magnolia Point is proposed for, the current appraised value for the land is 18,610 and buildings is zero. So I believe it's at ag value. Ryan addition is broken into, is already platted into individual lots. And I'm not getting that level of detail on the Ryan addition. But as we previously discussed, irrespective of what we do, irrespective of even the county appraiser, that's a mechanism that's set up by state statute. It's upheld by the Board of Tax Appeals. And so we don't have a lot of, well, we don't have any latitude to control their appraised value at the local level.
Except possibly as part of a development agreement. In terms of, I had just a couple more questions. How long has, do we have any sense of how long Perry Reed Construction has owned the Chapel Ridge Apartments and the Reserves at Prairie Glen?
It's, they're both online, and they could probably answer that best, but it's not been terribly long. They were previously owned by Overland Park, or Overland Property Group, sorry, and have been recently sold. So it's, it's been in the last couple of years.
Okay, because another thing that I'm, I'm looking at, and maybe it's just because I've driven through Wichita Falls and Abilene so recently, is what do people see when they're going past on the interstate? And I was wondering what Perry Reed Construction Company has in mind for upgrades to the two apartment complexes that I, I mentioned because they both look pretty rough right now. The Reserves at Prairie Glen, a little bit less so, but Chapel Ridge is, I'm, I guess I would like to know what are their plans for an upgrade there? What would give us some reassurance that, that we wouldn't have Chapel Ridge fronting I-35?
Well, I do know that we have building permits in right now for Prairie Glen.
Okay.
And I think some of this has just been kind of held at bay due to COVID and things like that and getting work here. But I think Alex or Dennis would probably be the best people to answer that more for you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And then, I think that's about all up. There's probably some others that'll, that'll come back to me, but I'll stop with that. And if the applicant is here and they would like to speak to those questions or to anything else, we can start with Perry Reed.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perry. I didn't know if you wanted to speak to my questions in terms of upgrades for Chapel Ridge and Reserves at Prairie Glen.
Yeah, the improvements to those properties are, are ongoing. The response on the delays due to COVID and such are justified. Yet, you know, when purchasing that existing property, it does take a while to get to the point where it's, you know, the reserves are set aside to do capital improvements and to take an older property that may or may not have been managed properly and, and return it to its exterior look that it should be at, which is always the goal, to maintain them as well as, as can be because they are assets that we want to make sure do well and are good for the community as well.
Okay, so, all right, so thanks. So that answers my question. You do have substantial remodeling inside and out planned for those facilities?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you would like to share about your project with, with the commission since you've, since you're, since you're here? I'd like, I want to at least offer you the opportunity to share anything that you'd like to at this point.
No, I think you guys, your, your discussions over how to do this, when to do it, are common. It is not abnormal. The, I think the presetting of these areas is when a community is able to kind of come to this determination that they need housing, a lot of times it's done a year or two ago with a little bit more, just, you know, hey, we see what's coming down the road here. Let's make sure we're able to attract these developers and builders with the incentives that other communities are offering. In regards to the Magnolia Point and specifically, I think it's a good infill location that, you know, is, would be a great asset, like you said, of the highway. Driving through town is going to look very nice. It's going to provide housing to all the new, current, new businesses coming to town. Make sure that your workforce housing has, you know, great places to live with nice amenities. It's always a battle to make sure we keep up older properties. I think we do a pretty good job of it, even when we've purchased them. But even, I think we can do a better job when it's a brand-new property that we owned from the start. Our, our goals personally are always to hold, hold the properties that we build and develop and keep them for 15, 20, 25, 30 years.
Thank you very much. I have one follow-up question for you, if you, if you don't mind. As you, as you can probably tell, since we've been having this discussion, we are in the process of completing a revamp of, of our housing study and policy discussions and all sorts of things like that. And we are really close. We're within a couple of weeks of getting that done. What is, what deadlines are you facing for, for your project? I mean, would, is a, is a two-week delay something that is acceptable to you? Or is it something that's going to make or break this project?
I don't know. I mean, I never want to say to feel like they've got to make it. I mean, these are some important decisions that involve a lot of different moving parts, especially on the, the front end where you haven't done it before or done it in a while. With that being said, you know, if it goes too long here and you get into summer, you know, if, if construction doesn't look like it's going to be able to start till fall of, or I'm sorry, spring of next year, then that can become an issue, you know, with this increased construction cost. What are interest rates going to do? What, you know, a whole variety of variables that we unfortunately cannot control. I think that your conversation about what other communities have done is a good one. I think that, myself included, the best, some of the best ideas we have are just improvements upon ideas we copied from others. And so I think taking what others have done and saying, does this work? And does it apply to what we need to do? Do we need to tweak it? Perfectly fine. I think I, I did listen to one of the, kind of the work sessions you guys have with Marty. Marty is great, very knowledgeable, very knowledgeable about all the different forms of incentives and just what it takes to get these types of projects done. Unfortunately, this was not needed 10, 15, 20 years ago. But it is now for a multitude of reasons. And no, two weeks is not in the world, but time is of the essence to an extent.
Gotcha. Thank you. I appreciate your candor, Mr. Perry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Perry, Commissioner Hoppe here. Quick question. Were you planning on doing these in phases so that, did I understand there were six buildings that were going to be built? Is that correct?
Yes, we have built quite a few in, in different, Danport, Iowa, Cedar Rapids, Grand Junction, Colorado. A lot of communities similar, Sioux City, Iowa. Communities are similar in size to Salina. It's a 28-unit building. Sometimes it can change. The total project would have, you know, once completed, over 300 beds. The, what we, more than likely, given my pre-career, kind of preliminary look at the market, it, it looks like we'd probably just go ahead and do all six buildings at once. But it could be broken up into two phases. And to speak more to the timing of it, without knowing what the incentives are going to be, it does delay our ability to, I guess, effectively and, you know, determine how to proceed or if to proceed. There are so many steps to get to the point of construction that just, you know, this is kind of step three of another 200 steps. Once we get our step, this, you know, the incentive step, there's a whole slew of other steps we need to do. And so knowing what we're dealing with on the incentive side or lack of incentives helps this is a process from our point of view.
And I guess my question when I ask, you know, if you had multiple buildings, will this be built in such a way, because of what we're going to have for housing needs, that some buildings would be open and be able to be occupied prior to the, to the total project being finished?
Yes, sir. We'd like to get the building done, be the temporary occupancy permit from the city, work with the building inspectors, make sure all the fire and safety issues are in place, and then move on to the next building. Usually, it takes about eight months from starting construction to having that first building open. And then from there, it's about every 45 to 60 days where another building's open from there. So the project, while, on the application, I did put 24 months. It could, it could go as quickly as 18 months.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
Any other questions for Mr. Perry while we have him here? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Do we have any questions for the app? I see we have applicants from the Ryan addition. Do we have any questions? I guess, hold on just a second, Ms. Driscoll. Are we finished? Are we, are we finished with our questions, at least for the time being?
I won't go far.
With Ms. Driscoll or Ms. Pat? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And I don't know if, does anyone have questions for the Ryan addition development? Or would the developers like to, to speak about their project?
Can we be, Ross Vogel with Heartland Housing Partners, and I'm assisting the developers. First of all, appreciate your guys' service. Get a chance to do this in front of a lot of groups and takes time and effort and consideration. We do appreciate that. You know, I'd be glad to answer any of those questions. I think I do want to come back on our project's behalf and answer some of the questions you asked before. But, you know, I would say, after having done as many single-family RHID projects, and by the way, I've also done rental projects across the state, every project is different. But ultimately, what we're trying to do is take all the ingredients of the cake and bake the cake. And the biggest ingredient is the end consumer. And the first thing we have to do is look at what your median income, incomes are here, what the expectations of there are of the end consumer. We have to make that work and then work backwards. I, I would say, the other thing, and I mention this to staff every time we've met, is, is the community is extremely fortunate that you've had four individuals that are from here step up and be willing to build workforce housing. It's not happening anywhere. You know, if, I live in Kansas City. I grew up in a small town, is how I started doing this. Across the metro, whether it's Johnson County, there's nothing under 300,000 in Johnson County. But relatively speaking, there's also, you know, nothing under 300,000 on the eastern parts of the Missouri side where you think it might be less expensive. And, and that just won't work here. So we have to find alternates, alternative methods of every, across the line. And I've driven across Kansas, Nebraska, working on this since years, since 2012. You mentioned Garden City, first project I did, and I'll mention, they didn't have a policy when I did the first project there. They do now. And I wish I had better, I wish I had a better solution for you. We don't, right? This is, this is the, this is, I'm not saying the best that we can offer. It's the best that my people brain can give, along with these guys' great talent here. And, and it's not great, because if it was easy, you wouldn't be, you were asking about, now, what's the name of the apartment project?
Reserves of Prairie Glen?
The one built in the mid-'90s.
Chapel Ridge?
Chapel Ridge. You know, that was the last market rate project you've had built here. That's 25 years now. And so that deferred maintenance is there for a reason. And it's, it's not from, the market has responded and said, hey, we're not interested. Is the reality of it. And I mentioned this to staff as well. We could burn up the phone lines all day long trying to find builders to come in and to build these houses that are workforce housing. It'd fall on deaf ears. I tell this, whether we're sitting here in Salina, Kansas, or places that have very hot markets, if you want workforce housing, you are in a competitive market, not for the end users, the purchasers. The purchasers are there, and they will come running. You're in, you're in a competitive market for the people that are willing to put the sticks in the air. I hope, I hope that makes sense.
Could you give us just a little breakdown? Could you give us just a little breakdown on what the properties will entail as far as?
Yeah, I do. And, and I have pictures. These are, these are representative, so don't take this away as, okay, this is gospel. This is what's being built. One of them is very close. One of them, you'll see is an actual picture of something previously built by one of the builders.
Is that the ones we have in our packet?
No, I can show you from the apartment complex.
Oh, that's, oh, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
I went to the wrong thing. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. The single-family homes are three-bedroom, two-bath, 1,100 square feet, slab-on-grade. They are workforce housing, but they will be nice. The duplexes are, or the, sorry, twin homes are, are just over 1,000 square feet, mostly three-bedroom, two-bath on those as well.
And your end price point on, on these?
That's a tough day, right? Fun question.
Your best.
Yeah, the best. You know, they hope to land at 210 on the single-family homes. That's going to be a tough, that'll be tough to hit. But once again, I mentioned it, you know, 90 seconds ago, we've got to look at the end consumer. And it's, you know, it's, it's a math problem, meeting the end consumer's needs. And then 175 on the, on the twin homes, per side. And, and, you know, you all have heard this over and over, but the reality is, and it wasn't always this way, and I don't know when it occurred, it's more expensive to build in Salina, Kansas, than it is in a, a lot of metro areas where 25 years ago, that wasn't the case. But it is the case now. And you also, coupled with, with, in certain parts of metros, you know, incomes are less here than they are in certain parts.
Couple other questions. One, what would the approximate price of these be without the RHID?
Yeah, I, well, you, you all use specials. Now, I, from the first project, I'd never seen specials until 2012 in Garden City. I didn't know what a special was. It depends on if you're using specials and kind of how that, how that all looked. I think without specials or without anything, I'd say 245 to 250, I mean, 240 to 250. And I just, I mean, part of the struggle is, I, I don't think for 1,100 square feet, people in Salina, Kansas are willing to pay $250,000.
And will the?
That doesn't mean that they shouldn't.
And, and another question, I know we ran into this on some other workforce housing we did. These will not be custom. These will be built and sold as-is. In other words, someone can't come in and start putting in certain amenities that would raise that price. Is that correct?
Right. Well, and I can't.
Is that part of a development agreement? I guess I look at you and city staff, because I know.
Certainly can be, if that's a priority for you. We know from past experience, we kind of had that conversation, we've been through and experienced where they started out as workforce housing and then customization certainly changed them house by house.
The method of building is not going to allow that to happen. I mean, there may be a few changes here and there, but the method of building is not going to allow that to happen.
I have one question that occurs to me as we, as we sit here. You know, you mentioned you've done this for a number of years, and you've seen lots of deliberations, I'm sure. When you walk away from this meeting, if you have an approval to set up this RHID and to support the, the other grant application, when you leave here, are you assuming that there's a consensus that we're all on board with the 25 years at 100% on, on, on the taxes? Or that we're, you know, there's a consensus on waiving the building fees or any, anything like that? I think that speaks a little bit to something that Commissioner Davis mentioned earlier in that, you know, what kinds of expectations are we setting for you when you walk away from this meeting?
I've done this long enough not to expect anything until the capital goes down on the ordinance and the 30 days passes. So, but I would expect that we need to get started on the real work. When we start talking, we said, hey, this is what we need to make this work, and we've got to start. There's still a lot of variables that we don't know, and you all don't know, that we've got to figure out, but, but this is the first step in the process. And just to be clear, on, you're not creating an RHID district tonight. You are making this land eligible for an RHID. And there is, there is a difference.
We apply to the state, how long does it take the state to get back and, and review whatever documentation that's submitted for approval, that the ground or the, the project? I guess it's the ground, actually, it's not a project. Would that be correct?
Right.
Is, is eligible for RHID.
It's a geographic area, right? You, it, it said, the, it goes to a specific person, the attorney for the Department of Commerce, and it says 30 to 45 days, although they can, I've seen it happen in a week, and I've seen it happen in 45 days. But Department of Commerce is certainly aware of the need here. And that brings me, I'll answer the timing question. Having done 15 of these across the state, and, and took me a long time to figure this out. You guys maybe already have it figured out. You are in, you, you have a, up to year 2025, that you need X number of units. You're, you're 2022 right now, right? So you, you have three years left as we stand here today. And I do think that two weeks is a big deal. And admittedly, I, I push, one of the reasons that we've been successful is, we push a string uphill on these, because they're really hard to do. You guys have really hard decisions to make. They're also really hard to do on our side. I, I would just lay out the timing of this. I would suspect, you know, three to six weeks to negotiate development agreement? And that's kind of after we all get together and say, okay, we're, we're moving. And it, it will get a blessing at the Secretary of Commerce level, because the needs here, we, we, we feel strongly about that. But it still has to be actually blessed. Three to six weeks to do that. So, you know, let's suppose that we do pass this today, and we do our second resolution, which in essence sets a ordinance hearing date for 30 to 70 days later. Well, we've got to have a draft resolution that's pretty well buttoned up to get to there, because it, it has to be able to be viewed by the public. And so, you know, at best, maybe June, whatever your first meeting is, that, first meeting in June is, but maybe more realistic, mid-June. Then you have hearing late July. You have your 30 days, your end of August, and you've lost 2021 any opportunity to build any infrastructure. So I, I have to tell you, I've been pushing staff really hard on this particular matter to do this several weeks before now. I appreciate your hard work, and I know you're going through the process. I, I echo Mr. Perry's comments about Mr. Schuchert's knowledge and experience and everything he's giving to you. He said, hey, you need this many housing at this price point, and RHID is one of the, one of the options to do so. I, I don't know that he's going to give you much more than that, except to say, hey, look at the other policies that we've seen, and, and adopt what you thinks, you know, what you think works for your community. Regardless, this is one project that is very specific to the need, and very specific to, once again, what we said before, is putting the, putting the ingredients of a cake together. And it's not perfect, and it's not lovely, but we've got to satisfy everything, everyone within that process. So.
Thank you.
That wasn't as eloquent as I liked, but the point is, the time is ticking in 2021.
Thank you. Any other questions?
One, kind of serious, one is lighthearted, but in that, I'll start with that one first. These are, no basements in these?
Yeah, that's correct. Still slab-on-grade.
All right. Are there any, I want to call them safe houses, but?
Safe rooms.
Safe rooms or neighborhood places to go for bad weather?
Storm shelter.
Excuse me, standby question. One of the developers, if you don't know who, who Southview is, is myself, Kelly Dunn, Craig Piercy, and Todd Rilberg. So we're all experienced developers in Salina. The plan is to incorporate more of a, as you call, a safe room in a closet way. So there should, there will be something. Now, is it, is it going to hold 15 people? No, but it will hold the occupants of, of a residence.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Other question, a little more sensitive. I realize that the first project, Magnolia Point, is rental, and yours would be houses for, for purchase. What's the difference in the business model that gives their expectation and return of in, return on investment, was it seven to 10?
No, theirs was 12.
Well, this one is 12.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Five to 10.
Five to 10.
And the reason I'm asking is if, on the one hand, you're asking taxpayers to forego receiving, you know, the city's income, which is what tax money is, in order to pay a higher return on investment for this project, you know, I would want to say, well, why are we, you know, what, what's unique about the way they have to do their business that justifies that higher return on investment?
They are just completely different business models.
And that's what I wanted you to.
Yeah, I mean, just, they're not, besides, they're building the same thing from an investment perspective, they are totally different. Would you like me to?
A little further?
Yeah.
Because I, I imagine I might not be the only one who has that question.
Yeah, and, and when I heard it, I thought the same thing, I will say. Your rental, and I've done, I've done multiple rental projects with RHID. It's a different business model in that it's a long-term return on investment, increase in value, you hope, as you pay down the, pay down the, the money that's borrowed. A lot of times, you don't ever get to that, because the value goes up and you sell it. So just a, a different, different business model. And when I, when I personally model an RHID for a, an apartment, I just look at it as tax abatement. And what I try to do is align the years where I think that that rental rate can work, can can work, and the abatement comes off. I can't speak to how they modeled theirs. Here, you know, a builder will tell you they, they need to make 15%. There's a tremendous amount of risk. My hair looks old, but I'm not that old, but I've seen two pretty serious crashes in the housing market. And one of the reasons we're standing here doing this, because when that crashed in 2008, your 12 builders went to four. And for doing so, don't forget, there, you know, I'll say, in this, in this model, we didn't put development fees and a bunch of fees that, that you often see a lot of, of projects built in. It's just straight, go out and build it and, and get it done. So I think 12% for a builder is probably on the low side, because usually you start at 15 and ends up at 8. And you have builders here that are willing, you know, the other thing about an investment is, you know, it used to be a lot longer time horizon. Now it's about five to seven years, any type of investment you see. You have, you have builders here that care about the community, that are willing to take, you know, 25 years to get that 12% that they're hoping to get, a really small return. I just had a, a meeting today, just with another builder, and he said, I just don't know why someone would do it that way. Let's just do it the old way. And I kept going, well, it's the ingredients in the cake, and it's $200 more a month for the end consumer. Let's make it work for everybody. Hey, I like the way I'm doing it. I, I think you should applaud the folks that are here that are willing to do it this way, because it's a bunch of money upfront, not a lot of payback upfront, but they're willing to, to wait for it, right? But I also applaud you guys to consider doing it, because you are foregoing those taxes that, that you need to run the city properly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Do we have any questions or comments from the public? Yeah, please, yes, please come on up and.
It's just a very, again, Sandy Welsh, Salina. I know that Governor Kelly just recently signed SB 90 on the expansion of the RHIDs. Does that impact any of the, the, the paybacks? And you, you were talking about accelerating it. I think she signed it on April 15th or something. I just didn't know if that would make your decision a little easier, if it was more conducive for the city because she expanded those? That was my only question.
That's a great question. And thank you for, thank you for coming up and asking it. I'm going to turn to staff and let.
In everything I've seen, I don't know that it really changes our circumstance. There is a lot of expansion of incentive money and, and programs that Ms. Driscoll mentioned, moderate-income housing funding as well. And I think there is a recognition that housing is a challenge, and they're trying to make some resources available. But I don't know that it changes, it certainly doesn't change the term to a longer term or anything like that.
And I think I read, maybe it was in the Kansas Reflector, that, is it the Kansas Resources Housing Division is doing kind of an in-depth examination and using the same consultant we did, or we are using, Marty Schuchert, to identify the needs and the solutions?
Yes.
In, in the rural area.
So the state is currently conducting a statewide housing plan. It's the first one in 30 years.
Right.
So desperately needed the northern, or the north-central Kansas community open house was held last Thursday here in our chamber annex. And I know several of us were on kind of a listening session via Zoom with the consultants and representatives from KHRC last week, going through a series of questions. And RDD, who is the company that Marty Schukert's with, is handling that. So basically, what the state hopes to have, or KHRC hopes to have, is this plan to then go to the legislature and say, look, this is how we need to be redoling out these funds. Because if you think about it, $2 million for MIH is really nothing, right? I mean, if you have max ask at 400,000, I mean, it's not even five projects, if you max them out on their asks, could you really do that with?
Right.
So I think there's a lot of that. We've also been told the money that they've recently received from the different federal bills, they're just kind of trying to sort through that. I think the expansion of that, and I'm not greatly familiar with it, but I, I did have something come through my email, that, that size of community criteria that we have, they've expanded some of that to be able to expand RHID to some of the larger communities.
Larger communities. Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. I don't think it'll affect us at all, any of the amendments that were made.
Okay. Okay. It's, it's expanding it in terms of opening it up to bigger community. I got you. Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that. Great question.
Commissioners, I hate to cut you short, but there is a Celine County Planning Commission meeting in this room at 7:00 PM.
Yes.
And we need to give them a little bit of time to turn the room, so.
I got you. I've been keeping an eye on the clock.
Hopefully, I wouldn't have to remind you of that, but it is approaching 6:30.
I've got an eye on the clock. It's nice to have a deadline. Are there any other questions or comments from the public?
Yeah, John Blanchard, Salina. Just a few things. First of all, in 2015, Mr. Vogels, good to see you again, came in with the property, Project for the Liberty subdivision, MIH. On that one, they were asking for a show of support. It passed 3-2, but they dropped the project. That submittal was a little bit incomplete, because quite frankly, the city had no policy, and I, I believe was not able to give him any direction whatsoever on what we had expected. I want to try to avoid the, how did we get here and why didn't we see this coming? Because it looks like the train for Abilene is at the station and ready to go. So I think you're looking at a number of policy decisions here, the least of which may be your, the standalone RHID policy. I think you're looking at tax policy and land use policy. Not to get into the weeds, but I think when you look at over by Menards, would you typically zone that R3, or would you zone it C5 or C7? I'd probably go C7. There's no housing there. It doesn't comport with any of the connectivity or any of the other items for residential in the comprehensive plan. And just a global thing, I, I'd love to get them to do some other projects in town that are more consistent with our river renewal plan and our downtown housing plan. But I think, you know, you, you mentioned economic development. Well, my God, everything we do is economic development. You're about to economic development us to death. Ball fields, field houses, tennis stadiums, public art, everything is economic development. We need consistent tax policy, and we need to have policies in place for this before we go. I think the cart is before the horse on these, and I think you're wasting, have the potential of wasting their time, but you definitely have the potential of wasting more of, more city resources. We continue to subsidize housing while we're being told that, my God, we have the greatest demand we've ever had for housing, and that somehow $250,000 is still a starter home. So just one last thing, is that in your resolution, you state that the RHID requires findings of good faith effort and everything else. findings of good faith effort and everything else throughout this entire, that we, that we have a shortage of adequate and good housing. And I seem to recall that over the past three or four years, we have passed subdivision and special assessment financing for subdivisions on numerous occasions. And I don't know how that fits into everything, but when we subsidize everything and we build a new water plant and we say that we're going to have 0.5%, I'm going to remind you, the housing study stated we were going to have 0.5% growth over the last 10 years. And the last, since 2010 to 2019, we have experienced negative 2.6% growth. And I applaud the efforts of the EcoDevo folks, bringing in things, but we got to remember, we lost Hawker and we never recovered from that. We lost it, we just lost El Dorado and we just lost Phillips. We're probably not going to be using acid core batteries for a whole lot longer, so XIDE may not be around for too long. I would ask you to proceed with caution and get your policies in place. And then the, just, just the last thing I want to mention is that when, I heard, I always hear, well, I'm going to, we need to start from zero in the ground floor on this and we need to build up whatever our policies are and, and all of that. And I hear that, and it's great to hear that Marty's working with the state and so on. But when we start, basically, when you're starting from scratch, has, have we, have we done any sort of housing assess, have we used the state's housing assessment tool from KHRC? And have we even called the office that does the assessment tool? And as far as, their tool is a little five-page deal, and they're asking for a lot of job information and demographic information and all that. And I don't believe any of that is in our housing, housing study. And there's also, and I don't know where, in my paperwork here, but there's also a, they use it to, they use it to help cities in a process similar to our DRT. And that is, they have a housing interagency advisory committee. And what that advisory committee does is it takes all of your information that you give them from your demographics and what your potential needs are and everything, and they do a meeting similar to our DRT. And I just am curious if we've ever done that. I talked to the woman there this morning and she informed me that she has never heard from the city of Salina. So, anyway, I would encourage that maybe we, we do some of that. In fact, I will give Mike, Mr. Skreg, just sort of the three things I downloaded, and they have some website information on there as well. So, anyways, appreciate your time and if you, my time's up, I heard the bell, so I don't know if anybody.
Thank you. Have a personal question, but. I thank you. Thank you very much. I guess I would look to staff to see if we have completed as, as part of our housing, either our initial housing study, LIF Salina, or any of our updates, if we have used the state housing assessment tool or used their, and I don't know if I wrote it down correctly, the housing interagency advisory board, if we've ever approached them and gotten their input or asked them about their process.
Not to my knowledge. I'm not sure if that was a discussion had in 2015 and 2016. I can't tell you as far as talking with the Department of Commerce for RHID applications. They were more than comfortable with our LIF Salina plan being adequate to show part of those findings is our, our need for housing and why this would be a necessary tool. And, and staff is more than happy to check more into that. We have a fairly good working relationship with KHRC. We talk to their staff frequently for the various programs that we work with. It's never been recommended specifically to us, but I'm always happy to check out new resources.
It sounds, it sounds interesting to me, and especially if we're going to be doing more of these in the future, it seems like it might be good to solidify those relationships and especially if we can justify using their own tools that, that, you know, that, that our policy decisions are, are sound. So, I for one would, would, would love to see some sort of getting more information about that and seeing if it's a, a resource that might be useful to us in the future.
How do we see that varying from what we're getting from Marty?
Yeah, I have to admit, I'm not all that familiar with it. Just looking at the information that Mr. Blanchard handed me, it does look stakeholder-driven, demographic-driven, and, and the 2015, 2016 housing study engaged different stakeholder groups and is very demographically driven as well.
Kind of does the same, yeah.
And without possibly asking KHRC to look at our housing study and, and speak to whether their process would be similar or above and beyond that, it's hard for me to say.
Would the state have other programs that we might be eligible for? You know, one-time grant programs or pilot programs or is that the agency?
We actually had a conference call with the Lieutenant Governor and the Director of KHRC about that very conversation. And, you know, MIH and, and had some conversations about manufactured housing as an alternative, but they didn't offer up any, you know, silver bullets, any programs that we weren't already aware of.
Or more importantly, silver dollars.
Exactly.
A quick, a quick question, as we're talking about the RHID, if this, if both these parcels are approved as RHID and we're not able to come to an agreement, a development agreement with them, this ground can still go back and you can still use special assessments. I mean, it can still be used any other way. I mean, this is just saying you have the potential to use RHID. It doesn't mean now you're locked into that, correct?
Yeah, I think Ross said it well. It's not over until everything is done. So, for some reason, we decided that, you know, development agreement doesn't go through, that, that that property should not be RHID anymore. We can choose not to go forward with that.
I guess, you know, you've got to decide kind of who to follow. You know, we know we have a little bit of a time crunch here, you know. I'm, we'll see if we, if two weeks leads to six weeks and then we start missing some, some construction times. If, if you look at the Haze policy, it states, one of them is, is it in the best interest of the city to do so?
Mm-hmm.
And we're looking at it now and saying, okay, we need some, we need some housing at a certain rate, and maybe this is the way to do it, is, is financing an already viable project? I'm not sure it's a viable project when we look at the apartments, when we're looking at maybe $1,600 a month rent versus 1,011. I can't remember, Alex is probably on there, I'd have to pull his sheet to, to see what they were. And I do, maybe, maybe there's some discussion we need to have with Marty to evaluate the, the profit margins if we have an issue with that. Maybe Marty could help us with that a little bit. But other than that, I, it, it looks like we're, you know, the answers to Haze's policy statement, we're answering yes, yes, yes.
Well, almost. Under financing, it says Haze will only entertain financing on a pay-as-you-go basis, which
That's what we're doing.
Which would not allow waiving of the permit fees.
Oh, yeah.
And that's the reason, you know, even if we approve this tonight, I don't think we should, you know, I would not be comfortable approving the development agreement until we, I'm going to call it our final initial visit, I mean, meeting with, setting up our.
We don't, we can't approve a development agreement tonight. We don't have a development agreement in front of us.
No, no, but I'm, but I'm looking ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Down, down the road. Because this is not what gets the project completed. It's the development agreement.
Agreed.
And we have to have a policy, because if, if we waived, I'm just going to use the, the building permits as an example, anything that we agreed to with that first instance becomes our precedent. And we have to have a, a policy, you know, and, and it's got to be aligned somewhere. And we need to have that in place where our team to negotiate the development agreement.
But I think policies give you direction. They don't give you hard numbers. I think they, I think they give you some guidance and you, I think you want to develop.
Right, but right now, we don't, we don't have any place to stand on and say we're going to start negotiating from here. You can, right, I agree.
Well, I agree.
You can always make exceptions.
And that's not what we're asking for today. Today, we're asking to approve the RHID, the ground.
And I can go along with that, but I don't want there to be any, and that's the reason I ask, how much momentum are we releasing here?
I think Mr. Perry and Ross are both sitting here, and I think they've heard that discussion.
Well, yes, and I don't want to give any false impressions that we approved their project tonight.
Ross, would you like to add?
Well, no, we, we do a lot of things here. I mean, how many times have you seen something on first reading that gets, literally dives on second reading? Never.
Right.
I mean, there's some things we do here procedurally that never get undone. And that momentum is, is, it's pushed down the hill and it rolls, because there's a foregone conclusion that somehow this is the end goal that we need to reach. And, you know, we've, how many times have we discussed special assessments? Deciding if, you know, if a statue in the road gets you 10%, if a curve in the road. We got to come up with a, a policy somewhere down the road. And I think, you know, we're, we're putting the cart in front of the horse on this, but the race is, you know, nothing's official until that development agreement is signed. Plus the 30 days.
I agree.
And I think that we're probably getting ready for, for an action here. But I think, I think that one thing I would like to emphasize about what Commissioner Davis just said is, when we put the cart before the horse, it seems like that's, it, it causes us problem, problems in, sometimes in economic development. It looks like it's causing us some issues in terms of housing. And to be frank, I think it's caused us some issues in our public-private partnerships. And, you know, I'm all for, you know, enthusiasm and wanting to encourage a desperately needed housing, because nobody up here is going to say that we don't need affordable housing. We truly do. But in the absence of any kind of policy, especially when we've been talking about getting this formed and we're so close to doing it, it's, it's just a really big stretch for me to go ahead and say, all right, we're declaring this eligible and, you know, we'll work things out in, in the development, development agreement and hopefully we'll have a policy in place by then. And I know that every policy is going to have an exception. If you looked at every single one of those policies that we were supplied with, they all had a caveat in there about, or whatever the governing body thinks is in the best interest of the community. I get that, but I, I don't have a framework for, for making a decision, at least I don't feel like I do, one way or the other tonight. And I support both of these projects. I do. I want to have a policy where I can explain my justification for my support of these, of these projects.
I mean, I would almost rather entertain the idea of these projects without seeing the details of them, because
Yeah.
I don't want to give the impression that I'm committing to detail. I mean, if our policy is we don't waive building fees, well, you know, who knows? That may be the, the, on the wrong side of the line in the sand for the group. But we have to have a, a policy somewhere. I mean, really, the details of the group, I mean, of the plans really isn't all that much important, because that has to be negotiated out. But when we send staff to negotiate, they should rightfully look at us and say, well, you know, what do you want to give? You know, you know, where, where's your, your, your back line?
Yeah, and I agree with that. And we may be talking to Marty about some of those guidelines, but I guess for, for lack of better, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to do Mayor Hodges' move that we approve Resolution Number 21-7954, setting forth the legal description of the real property proposed to be designated as, as a rural housing incentive district within the city, and this would be on the Magnolia Point.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 21-7954 for Magnolia Point. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Nay. That motion passes 3 to 1.
Mayor Hodges, I move that we approve Resolution Number 21-7955, setting forth the legal description of real property proposed to be designated as a rural housing incentive district within the city, and this would be referred to as the Ryan Edition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 21-7955 for the Ryan Edition. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Nay. And that motion passes 3 to 1.
And, and I would like the, Mr. Perry and Ross to know that's here today, that this does not in any way make us, we have your plans, but we will, we will be setting policy and getting with you on the incentives we're willing to do. But this at least gets us able to submit to the state, so thank you for being here.
Thank you very much for your time, gentlemen. All right. Other business, I believe that Ms. Driscoll had wanted to address rescheduling the housing plan for May 17th. Okay. Is that, will that work for everyone and does that work with staff?
If that's acceptable to you, I don't know that we need formal action, but if there's.
And I don't, it, it does sound like we have some, some questions and some discussions we need to have, and there may be some more analysis on, on the ROIs and stuff. Would that be something that we would contract out with Marty to help us if we felt like that was?
We can certainly add it to the conversation and let us talk with him a little bit and see.
Okay. With that, I mean, I'm looking at my fellow commissioners. I, I know we're not reversing this completely, and I think we need to, to analyze some numbers and, and whether that's Marty or someone else might be beneficial to us to spend a little money to, to help us get where we need to be.
I think that's a good idea, with all the information we can.
And we should obviously familiarize ourselves, you know, double down on the three examples of policies we have and be prepared Wednesday to, it is Wednesday, right?
It is, it is Wednesday. And that was just something I was, I, I hope that we have time to get into some of the more strategic planning aspects that we've, you know, that we've talked about here tonight and, and going forward. So, hopefully, time will allow us to, to delve into some of those issues, especially if Marty was expecting some feedback from, from that, so.
So, Marty will be watching.
Okay.
And then I've got actually some exercises that I'd like us to go through. So, the questions that I sent in the packet are really critical. Mayor Hodges, I appreciate your feedback, but that's, I kind of need all of you guys to do that. And things we need to get into are really the kinds of things that help to narrow Marty down on things like ROI is, is a characteristic of a project that's really important to you.
Right.
Or, you know, the price point is a really important thing, because that's, that will start to look at policy, because if we can narrow those down, that's where Marty and I start to research through and kind of say, you know, this is kind of typically where everybody's at. Do we feel comfortable with that? And the policy decision for you guys in, in that document he creates is based on whether you liked that number, you want to go higher, you want to go lower. So, we're kind of right about there, but we need some of that rough structure.
Absolutely. Or the length of a tax abatement, for example. I mean, you know, if, if, you know, what, yeah, I get you. I mean, there's some variables that I think that we can get to a consensus on about, you know, what, where are our limits that we would really, really prefer not to go beyond or?
And you don't necessarily have to have the solution or the final outcome. If you have a concern, a talking point, to Ms. Driscoll's point, that then heads us into a direction to research and bring you back policy suggestions.
But that gives Marty some time, because it was just the turnaround time to make the 10th.
Absolutely.
Was just, we wouldn't be able to grab your thoughts from Wednesday and do that justice. So, we appreciate the 17th.
No, I appreciate you reacting to that and being able to incorporate it. I think that's an extremely positive adjustment, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other business for the commission?
I did have one quick, I had one quick thing, let's take two seconds. Had a question, I know, and this has been several years ago, we had discussed maybe some brochure racks or something in the Tony's Pizza Event Center. I know there was quite a bit going on at the Field House this weekend. And it just seems to me like we're missing out, that we don't have some information there that individuals can pick up, whether it's, I obviously prefer it be downtown, but the whole city, I mean, whether there's the ability to, or to advertise what's, you know, going on, whether it's on some type of. know, going on, whether it's on some type of billboards that can be swapped out or something. It seems like Field House has been open for several years, and we don't, we don't have that in place, I was in there this weekend, so...
And I know there's video boards that they use and sell some advertising on, but I'll check on...
Yeah, I'm not sure that's being used, you may want to check on that. That was discussed at one point, but I'm not sure it is, so...
Okay. Anyone else? I just have two very quick things as well. We're gonna be out of here by 6:51, I think that's pretty good. First of all, just about the Field House, I understand that staff has been having some difficulty with mask compliance at the Field House, and if that continues, I think that we, as a governing body, need to discuss, you know, what we're, what we're comfortable with. I don't think that staff should be in the position of having to ask people to leave, but at the same time, right now, it's an ordinance of our city, and if people are not going to be respectful of that, what, what do we want to do? Are we just gonna let it go? Are we going to call on our very few police officers to come in and spend time sorting through that? I mean, I think it's, it's a conversation to have, so hopefully we'll see some improved compliance, but if we don't, since most of the B117 variants are more contagious for children, I think it's something that we need to be aware of. And then the medians, we got an email, I think we all got it, about the mowing schedule for the medians. And I didn't know at what point we will have seasonal staff in place, or staff to, staff enough to start getting through that. And I believe I forwarded some photos that the gentleman sent. I wasn't quite sure if they were all public right-of-way, or where, if they were ours, if they were somebody else's, so I did forward it.
And we did start mowing the medians, starting on South 9th, moving north, so...
Oh, great.
You recently awarded that contract, and today was the contractor's first day, starting in priority order.
All right, well, thank you.
You should see dramatic improvement over the next seven days.
I did those dandelions jumped up like crazy.
I know, yeah, don't look at my yard.
It's not my yard.
Yeah.
I may, I have a motion we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you Wednesday.